On record? Thank you. Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the August 17th, 2022 regular meeting of the Kenai City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and ask if you are able to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Petty?
Here.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Here.
Councilmember Winger?
Present.
Councilmember Naxted?
Here.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Here.
Councilmember Basden?
Here.
Councilmember Sonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First up, we have agenda approval. We have no lay down this evening, by the way, but we have agenda approval, item A3. Councilmember Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Would you like to amend?
I'd like, yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to move to suspend the rolls and address the agenda item F1, unfinished business, ordinance number 3298-2022, prior to the agenda item D, public hearings. Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll hear item F1, prior to public hearings. Next up, we have consent agenda. Councilmember Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there anybody from the body that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, clerk, please read the consent agenda on the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the meeting minutes from the special meeting of July 26, 2022, brought to you by the city clerk and the regular meeting of August 3, 2022, brought to you by the city clerk. New business action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. New business ordinance number 3304-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the airport special revenue and airport improvement capital project fund for Kenai Municipal Airport disadvantaged business enterprise program updates, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing on September 7, 2022. And ordinance number 3305-2022, conditionally granting certain foreclosed city-owned properties described as Lot 8 and 11, Block 9 and Lot 4, Block 10, Mumpsen replat of addition number 1 and 2, parcel number 03910211, parcel number 03910208, and 03910304, to Central Peninsula Habitat for Humanity, Inc., for construction of housing, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing on September 7, 2022, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record by the clerk? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to council. Unanimous consent for approval was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to item B1, scheduled public comment. This evening, we have an introduction to Executive Director Peter Yvonne, Executive Director of the Kenai Sea Indian Tribe. Mr. Yvonne, you have the floor. Yep, just right there. Is the mic on?
It looks like it's on. All right, so just jump right into it. Well, thank you, first of all, for the invitation and the opportunity to get to meet with you all today and speak a little bit about the tribe and about myself. I know I've met Paul, kind of had a meeting already initially to kind of kickstart the, hopefully, the relationship between the tribe and the city. And so, just a little bit about myself first. As you mentioned, Peter Yvonne, I'm originally from Acutec, Alaska. It's a village out near Bethel. Born and raised, graduated high school out there and took off, went to college, and then went back home. And initially, just kind of working my way through tribal work, I've worked for Wells Fargo Bank, went back to working for the Housing Authority for the Bethel region, and then eventually came over here. And so, I'm about four months in, and so, a lot going on over there, and so, I'm still kind of getting my feet wet and kind of understanding what they all have going on. But I'm a part of that is the outreach, and I really appreciate the time to kind of come out here and to speak to you all today, just to kind of give you an update on what's happening with the tribe, but also try to find ways that we can partner on certain things. And I know Paul's been really gracious about giving me some time initially to meet with him, but also, I've gotten emails from the fire department just to see what we can do there and other opportunities that I'm hoping that we can build on. And so, I'll kind of start out with just what we have going on within the community. I'm sure you guys see all the construction projects, all those exciting things happening throughout here and also kind of in between us, the dot now. And so, I'll start out with the education campus. That's obviously the biggest news that we have going on. Our grand opening is scheduled for September 1, and I believe we did get that invitation out, but we will have that kind of a one-day event to hopefully welcome people to come in, take a tour of the facility. As of right now, we are just going to start with head start and early learning, and we're hoping to build into that program, into that facility for K through 12 at some point. And so, a lot of that is still being kind of worked out on what that looks like, charter school, private, all the above, but I think those, a lot of those things are going to be worked out as we're progressing. And so, we'll keep working on that. Other thing is the community hall in Harvest Pavilion down at the waterfront. I know that is just kind of groundbreaking, but we're hoping that'll be a nice facility to have tribal gatherings. It's supposed to be, excuse me, 3,400 square feet, up to 300 people that we're hoping to have down there, and just getting started, but we are anticipating that being done later this year. And so, we can start holding events there. The other thing is the tribal court. You saw kind of the, initially, it was supposed to be kind of a minor renovation, but as we dug into it, a lot more work needed to be done, so we actually had to demolish the whole facility, but that's also going to be a nice area for our tribal court. The expansion includes two new larger courtrooms, a new remodeled office, and some more circle rooms that we're hoping to utilize for not only the membership, but also whatever else that might fit with the city as well. So, we'll keep working toward that. Other updates include our maintenance warehouse building. I know the skeleton, and hopefully you guys have seen that big, big area out there that we're just getting started over there, hoping to kind of consolidate a lot of our supplies and materials that are spread out throughout town and kind of get them all under one roof and hopefully use that as maintenance as well. As well as a transportation building. I know that we have some buses and that fixed bus route that's coming down the pike as well, and we're hoping to be able to work with our vehicles and all the above there as well. And so, that's also another exciting development that we're working on, all under construction. Upcoming, we do actually have, we were recently awarded a grant through HUD for elders housing, and so, we're kind of still kind of working that out on what we want that to look like, because it's going to be an 18-unit facility. Well, it's not expected to be completed till 2025, but there's actually other considerations we're making on the medical side, kind of making sure that we have services that we can offer for that age group that will be more than just housing. I think that's appropriate and necessary just for sustainability as well, and so that we can actually pay for that going forward. And so, that's another one that we're still working through. Other things that we have going on within the tribe itself that I will touch on really quickly, DWC. We have been without a health system director over there for about two years, and so thankfully, we did actually hire somebody here in July that is just getting started to help with services and kind of tying together a lot of things that we've seen that are needed just across the board to help kind of service, obviously, the people in the area, but also tribal membership and others that we want to expand our services to. And so, that is kind of just a quick update on those several things. We actually had a group here today for Title IV E that we were recently awarded related to ICWA, and so, kind of working toward that as well and see what partnerships we can have that will include that as well. And so, just a brief overview of those things that we have going on. I'm more than happy to kind of go more in depth with any of those projects or questions you may have, but the other big piece of that is the partnership. And so, like I said, as I mentioned, Paul and I have had a pretty, have had a good meeting so far with one, but we're hoping to expand on that, and a lot of that is on myself to kind of get those scheduled, but we're hoping to expand not only the administration, but also council to council, because I think there are definitely areas there that we can improve our relationship on our end as well, and I recognize the history there, and kind of trying to build on that to kind of hopefully turn the corner a little bit. So, yeah, that's pretty much all I kind of wanted to jump into to start, but I'm more than happy to answer questions, so.
Very good. Well, first of all, thank you for being here. Mr. Yvonne, that building looks beautiful. Nice to get in there and take a tour. Look forward to that.
Oh, for sure.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you, Peter, for coming. It was nice to meet you, and I, you know, I have to say, hearing more about the elders' housing really excites me. Do you mind maybe giving me a little bit more on that? I guess my big question is, the people currently living at the Chuda House, would they get first dibs to moving over, or would this be just an expansion for new residents? How would you navigate through that?
It would be new residents, and a lot of that, to be honest, is still being worked out. That's actually through our tribally designated housing entity. That's a partnership with Sal Matoff, and so, that's going to be, is going to be the goal, is to not only serve Kenai Sea, but also Sal Matoff membership. As I mentioned, we're still trying to kind of figure out ways to keep it self-sustaining going forward, but that is the idea, is to have, it will be new people that were coming in, going through the application process and all the above, but there's still a lot of questions that was just awarded actually back in May, and so, it's been a few months, but we're really excited about it, and it's obviously a huge need for the community, but also, you know, just like in many communities that I came from as well, so.
Thank you for that. Yes, there is definitely a huge need in the Chuda House. I believe you guys have a waiting list most of the time, and I think you guys have some tenants in that facility that are around 100 years old as well, so. I spend time there, my grandma's there, so I spend time at the Chuda House. It is a great facility, so I do look forward to seeing you guys expand with more elder housing.
Oh, for sure.
Thank you for the updates.
Oh, definitely, and that's actually another goal of the housing entity is to, of the partnership, is to find other ways to expand. I know coming from Bethel, I was the COO for the Housing Authority out there for two years, and, you know, in that region, we have new construction. We also have a pretty extensive rental side, kind of, not a business, but it's something that we provide for the region, which is obviously a huge need here as well. And so, those are other opportunities we are looking at in expanding not only for the tribe, but for the region too.
Councilmember Basden?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming and visiting with us. How large is the educational campus? How many students and what grades will be taught there?
Right now, it's only just the early head start, and just because those things are still being worked out. I know that the council had, about four years ago, gone down to New Zealand just to kind of see what they had going on, and that's kind of where the idea had started, but I know there is a new facility that just opened in Anchorage, and that's actually a pretty good model for what they're looking for. Unfortunately, there've been some, kind of, the initial idea has kind of been scrapped from what they were, what they were looking for with that K through 12, and a lot of that is going to be looking at other examples, because I know in Bethel as well, I'll keep you as an example, but we do have the learning centers as well over there that's for K through 12, because that is ultimately what they want to do, or what the tribe wants to do is have, offering a full K through 12. The facility can hold, I believe, up to 200 students, I think is the plan, and that's just from K through 12, but we do have the early learning segment, which right now, I believe there are 70 or so students right now that are in that age group.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, you had mentioned something about there was going to be a senior housing with a medical component. Would that, is that like assisted living plus, or how does that, how does that work?
That's what we're envisioning, and that's the same facility that Councilmember Winger had just mentioned, but that is what we need to do, because the way that is set up now, unfortunately, is just apartments, basically, with none of that as a part of it, basically. And so, that is going to be necessity to make sure that we can keep it going, going forward, and expanding it as well, because 18 units is nice, but it's not nearly enough to even crack the need, and so, we'll keep working towards finding more funding, which is out there, but I think we just need to identify what we need, we want to actually kickstart it with so that it actually has the best chance for success, just from the beginning.
Yes, I think the medical component is really leveraging and exciting. I'm glad you're pursuing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Petty?
Thank you, sir, for being here. Thank you for giving us an update with everything that's on y'all's plate over there. It's very exciting. Could you expound more on that transportation opportunity, when you anticipate that that will be coming forward, and will that be public? Will that be for the public as well?
Yes, good question. That is the cotton new area fixed transit bus route. So, right now, it is supposed to span from Nikiski to Sterling, and we actually did get a grant to kickstart that, but, I mean, it is actually, it is going to be fully operational by next year is the plan, and from my notes here, it is going to be open to everyone as a supplement to what is happening now, so it will be for the general public.
Further questions or comments? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I do appreciate you being here and giving us an update on all the projects, some of which I didn't know about, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to any future updates and working with you. I guess I do have a question. Where do you, where is your office?
It's right over here.
Okay, it's over here by the airport?
Yeah, the administration building. It's an old warehouse, and they repurpose it to hold several different departments, but, yeah, our campuses are pretty spread out, and I think that is what they envision at some point, is to have it all within, you know, the old Kenai there is where we have DWC and our family social services and a couple other departments, but at some point, we would like to have kind of everything put together, because that building is going. We had water pipes burst last month or so in the admin building, and so, it's definitely that time where we weigh whether we keep renovating or go ahead and pursue a new facility, and we're leaning towards a new facility at this point.
Further questions? Vice Mayor Glenn Denning?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, you had mentioned the tribal court. When you first were starting your presence down in Old Town, there was a, just a basic building for the tribal court, and we went through it, and a friend of mine is a judge there and was, explained how it actually worked. It isn't necessarily punitive, but it's educational. Can you kind of explain that bridge between what we think is a juvenile court and what we think your positive example of a tribal court is?
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, obviously, with our jurisdiction and authority, just we obviously can't, you know, imprison anybody, so that we have to find other ways to resolve disputes or things that are brought to the court, and they are pretty specialized. I mean, we don't have the capacity to take on anything really serious up to levels of, you know, the felony and those kind of things, but when it comes to things that can be resolved, and it is an approach where they have a circle, where we have a person basically mediating. There's a lot of mediation, getting people together, but also committing people to community service, whether it be with elders, just needs that are identified. And so, it is definitely specialized. I'm, to be honest, learning myself a lot of what they have here, because it is advanced when you consider across the state from what other tribes are doing. In Bethel, we had a very, just barely, a couple of judges, and it was really basic compared to what they have here, and like I said, to be honest, I would have to learn a little bit more to give you the full range of what's happening, but I'd welcome to come back and give you more information on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just one more. Do you mind elaborating a little bit more on the community hall and pavilion? Is that going to be for events, weddings, things like that?
Yes, it's down at the waterfront, which is right next to our educational fishery, and so, that was the initial intent, was to have a place for those types of events, and from my notes here, yeah, it holds up to 300 people, 3,400 square feet, so a lot of space there, but the intent is to have, we have our opening and net ceremony, we have things that can happen mainly in the summertime, because it is actually an open air, yeah, it's not enclosed, and so, it will be limited on when we can actually utilize that, but that is the intention, is to have it open for, I'm not sure if it's going to be general public initially, but I think to be able to keep sustaining it for different things, we're going to have to open it up to other things as well, but those things are still being worked out since it's just groundbreaking, but I believe that's, that is the ultimate idea.
Thank you for elaborating more on that. And then, you were talking about partnership, and I think that's great. I mean, I think it'd be very valuable for us to work together in partnership, and I know a few years back, there was talk of partnership with the park and the playground there in Old Town Kenai, and it desperately, it's been on our capital improvement project list for quite a while to get new equipment, so maybe that would be something that we could identify, since you guys have a big footprint in Old Town Kenai, maybe that's something we can partner and work together.
Oh, yeah, I'd look forward to that. Those are the types of ideas and opportunities that we're definitely looking for, and as I mentioned, Paul's been gracious enough to kind of have us start that, maybe a quarterly meeting, and we'll kind of get together to have those, but these types of forums are great opportunities to bring those up as well. I know the new educational building has a pretty sprawling playground, if you take a look, if you've driven by it, but those are definitely things that we want to look at, and, yeah, no, for sure, as we're coming back to these types of events, we can do that.
Further questions, comments? So, yeah, I got a few things. The tribal court, is that going to be in the same footprint, the expansion there is where it was?
Yes, yeah, they basically demolished the whole top end of it, and they're just expanding on the same, right next to DWC, the ones.
Okay, very good. And then, the Boys and Girls Club are looking at developing a property there just on South Spruce, which is next to the baseball fields, the Little Lake Fields, but there's a little ravine there like between there and municipal park, which is pretty close to where you guys are, and the plan is to make a, put a bike, a bridge there and put a walking path over to that Boys and Girls Club. So, there's kind of, I always said that might be a neat tie-in to what you guys have going on, but the last thing I have, and, because I know, I just can maybe get official pronunciation of your facility.
Oh, it's education. I'm learning as well. Fluent Yupik speaker, but the Nilo language is definitely coming to me. The Kotanu Tana Do Dildit is, I believe, is how it's pronounced.
Okay, very good.
Kotanu Tana Do Dildit.
I think you got it.
I was going to say, fairly close, but don't quote me on that one, even though we're on record.
Very good, yeah. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Yvonne. Appreciate you coming and giving us an update and look forward to working with you.
Oh, yeah, no, for sure. I appreciate the time and apologize for the, pardon, running over here, so I do appreciate it, and I look forward to coming back again and fostering the relationship and the partnerships. I think there's a lot of potential there, and I thank you guys for the time.
Thank you. Next up, we have unscheduled public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Jake Phillips. I live on 1408 Third Avenue. I'm here representing the KCHS marching band. I am the current battery leader, and I've come to ask for maybe a little help in funding, you know? Right now, we are, we have a funding website to help with equipment and a trip that we would like to take this coming December to the Fiesta Bowl to play at the Fiesta Bowl and then the parade. And the purpose of the fundraiser is mostly to help the kids who, you know, maybe, you know, don't have the money to go, to help them kind of go with us, because we will be representing Alaska in that Fiesta Bowl Live, the halftime show and at the parade. And I was just wondering if I could get some emails for anyone who's interested in helping out, so I can put them on the website for anyone who'd like to help out.
Yeah, Mr. Phillips, we have, on our website, there's a tab there for the council with all their contact information and emails there, so it might be appropriate for you to just go there and you can jot all that information down. What, I guess my question is, did you have a funding request in mind? Well, presumably, you guys are invited to go there, is that, so it's, that's on the schedule for you, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, do you have a funding request or an amount in mind that you guys would be seeking, or is it something from the city?
No, just anyone who's willing to help out, even what you want.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Phillips? Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Jake, and I went to Kenai Central, and I was in the concert band, stage band, and pep band. Pep band was kind of required, but I loved it anyway, and marching band, too. We had a marching band, you know, for all the football games and all that, in the snow sometimes, but you'll get our email address, send me a, send me a request.
I will.
Thanks.
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you, Jake, for coming and speaking on behalf of this, and I have $100 bill in my purse I'll give you tonight for this, and then I'd be happy for you to email me as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sonard?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Jake, it does me proud to see you sitting here and presenting and talking about it, and Silas right here. I remember both of these boys well when they walked into my classroom as sixth grade band. It's been a few years, but both of you are starting your senior year. I wish you luck. So, you guys have been invited down to the Fiesta Bowl to do the parade. I'm just curious, has the school board approved the out-of-state trip yet?
It's approved. We just had to get the funding board.
Okay, okay. That was my main question there, because I know there's a 12-month leeway there. Okay, well, best of luck to you guys, and you will find our emails, and so, you can connect with me through email.
I will.
And how is the fundraiser for the new uniforms going?
We got the new uniforms, actually.
You got the new uniforms, okay.
Hats and all.
Excellent. Thank you for coming and talking tonight, Jake.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Basden?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Jake, how many members do you have in the band this year?
It's like 20, 24, 25? Around there, yeah.
What instrument do you play?
I am the battery leader. That's drums, snare.
All right, so, yeah, I'll make a donation, too. Thanks for coming in. Is it true that the band director you have today is the best one Kenai's ever had?
Ah, why not say that in front of her?
I won't, I won't. We know how Ms. Sonard is. She's been great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yikes. Any other questions or comments? Certainly, if you need any additional information, you can get ahold of our clerk, Ms. Sainer, and she'll be able to help you all with contact, facilitate that information, and definitely reach out, reach out to me, too, and I'll see what I can do to help you out there, too. But do you have a goal in mind, like a funding goal, just out of curiosity?
What is the goal, $15,000?
I believe the total cost for all of us was $75,000, but the current fundraiser is for $25,000, which would take care of, like, it'll, basically, the amount that we get lowers the cost for each of the students to pay for their own ticket. It's full ticket, it's full food, everything, so.
Okay, very good. Yes, Silas, you're still wrapping. You're certainly weighing in if you'd like.
Yeah, Silas, I'm actually the brass line leader, well, not brass, I guess, just supposedly the entire non-drums band. Yeah, wind leader. And Jake, you do have the thing that you can hand out to everybody in the people out there?
Give me an email. Just pass it along, I suppose.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes. Yeah, if you don't mind, just finish taking questions here, Jake, and we, Councilmember Winger?
I was just going to ask that if we end up having no other public comments, if we could have a brief eddy so I can give him some money before he leaves.
Yeah, no problem. Any further questions or comments? And I would suggest, maybe if you could, you know, maybe plan on coming in and speaking, so you're looking at going down in, what is it, December, did you say?
Yeah.
So, maybe a status report around November. Let us know where you're at, okay?
Yeah, I will.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Might want to, thanks, Jake. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll take a five-minute eddy. Seeing none, we'll take a five-minute eddies. Back on the record, continuing on with item C, unscheduled public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Nelson.
Marion Nelson, Kenai Arts Center, president of the board. Just to remind you all that the Harvest Auction at the Arts Center, which is happening again, we were out for a couple of years, thanks to COVID, but this, we're back on schedule again. So that will be September 24th, and the tickets are available now. They're $50 apiece. The food is going to be magnificent, I must say. And the art, unlike most of the fundraisers that take place in the area, where there's always some art, this is absolutely mostly art that is auctioned, both outcry as well as silent auction. And the show for September is the artwork that will be in the auction, as well as, of course, the other things during the auction, too. But that show, like on one wall, when you come in on the left side of the main gallery, will be the, or the silent auction items, and they can be bid on throughout the month. Now, if you pay the price, the value price that's stated, you own it, but you can't take it home until the end of the month, until after the event itself, but you can buy it. And on the other wall will be the items that will be in the outcry auction. And there's going to be a lot. There's a lot of great artwork, as well as many other fun things. So that's our, you know, that's what's coming up. That's the big deal for us. And then, right now, there's a two-person show, Linda Enfante Leons from Anchorage and her husband. Oh, God, I better forget his name now. Who was it? Yeah, Graham Daniels. He was actually a juror for our jury show a couple of years ago. Very forceful personality. He's a great artist, and the two of them could not be more different in terms of their art. So it's a very, very interesting show, a very professional show, so it's worth taking in, and that's up through the end of the month. Wednesday through Saturday, noon to 5:00, inviting you over. Hope you buy a ticket to come to the Harvest Auction.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Nelson? Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, for coming in, sharing with us. Did I miss the date of the Harvest Auction?
September 24th.
September 24th.
6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Further questions, comments? Thank you.
Sure.
For anybody who has never gone to that one, it's always a lot of fun.
Say that again, please.
It's always a lot of fun. That event's always a lot of fun.
It is a lot of fun, absolutely. Balloons, you know, the whole show.
Thank you, Marion.
Yep.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move to F1, which was moved by suspension of the rules. Councilmember, and I will note that, I'll read it just for the record and then let everyone know that there is a substitute here. So just so everybody knows that this is at the, at the meeting of August 3rd, 2022, this ordinance was postponed to this meeting. A motion to enact is on the floor. Substitute ordinance, which has not been moved yet, 3298-2022. Enacting Kenai Municipal Code, Chapter 14.30, floodplain management within the Title 14, planning and zoning, to regulate land use within the floodplain and authorizing the city to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So we got a, the motion enacted on the floor. Councilmember, next up.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to amend ordinance 3298-2022 by ordinance 3298-2022. Substitute request unanimous consent.
I second that.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we now have substitute ordinance number 3298-2022 on the floor. And with that, I'll ask administration for a administration report.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just wanted to make sure council is aware. We do also have Mitch Payne from FEMA, who is on Zoom here tonight, and he will be able to answer specific questions that council might have that administration is unable to. For an overview of it, though, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Best, our interim planning director, and he'll give you an overview of the ordinance and what this means for the city.
Mr. Best.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Through the city manager, I took this item to the Planning Commission, and there was a, an active map that I hot-linked for you, which worked up till this morning. And now, of course, it doesn't work. And I was going to give you a little presentation that I gave the Planning Commission at their, at their last meeting. And it is the, it's draft mapping that was utilized through a LiDAR, which is light detection and ranging. It's a, it's a very accurate way to determine ground elevations and relationships to things on the ground. And so that, through that digital mapping process, they have a very accurate map that's available for you to look at. And what that, and some of you may have been able to get on there when you first got your packet, or, you know, it was buried deep in here, so I didn't expect anybody to really look at it. But if you did, that's great. And what that provides is the, a very accurate representation. The old maps are, the elevation data is good, and that's how, that's how the flooding is measured, is through the elevations that run across the cross-sections in the river. The imagery that goes along with it is not as, not as good. So you're matching up horizontal data with vertical datum, and sometimes the mapping wasn't as accurate. But the elevations hold, so that was, that would require the survey to go out, determine where that elevation hit actually on the property. But with this, these digital imaging from the LiDAR, it makes it, you know, the mapping becomes very useful. And so we're really excited about being able to utilize that, that new mapping that they have out when that's, when that comes out. I believe Mitch probably can elaborate on how long it takes. But right now, we had about six properties that there were questions about that I think we have satisfied with FEMA as to the buildings that were constructed since 2016 on those properties, and we rectified what needed to be done on those properties. What I really wanted to be able to show you is the floodway, where that, that particular area is pretty much a no-no for any type of activities within the floodplain. That floodplain that's shown on map, on page 70, it's, you know, that's, it's a bit, you know, it's the 10,000-foot view, so it doesn't really give me the ability to show you the accuracy of that data. But it is very good data. It shows four different colors on there, A-zone, AE-zone, a X-shaded zone, and a floodway. And there's regulatory construction methods in all of those areas. And really, the floodway's off limits for just about everything. That's the zone of velocity, where in an event that the water rages through and anything in that way, within that flood area is going downstream. So that, anything that would be put in there really has to be constructed to a degree that would show that there's no rise with, providing a zero rise in that area. Now, when you get back into the AE-zone, that there is, there are standards that need to be met, and elevation criteria that you would need to be if you were going to build a structure in the A or the AE-zone. And that's, that's what this ordinance does. It really defines how you would construct and to what elevation you would construct a structure, a livable structure and/or a garage, a non-habitable dwelling, and what you would need to do to construct those in the floodplain. A lot of that area is, that you have, that falls into those areas, is either state or city land, and it's, you know, conservation, and there's not a lot of activity that's going to, to take place in those areas. And so for private property, it's kind of twofold here, the whole ordinance. One, it provides us the ability to work with the core engineers and receive funding for our bank stabilization project. And number two, it gives the people that are in this flooded area with structures an avenue to get flood insurance that provides them a break on their insurance. It's not something that, I mean, it's something we'll administer and we'll keep track of, of those particular things, because they're already there, and we'll go out and we'll try to, we'll try to acquire what has been done in those areas, because some of those people, like, it's like a lending institution, being able to say, yeah, you need NASBIL, because I'm going to loan you money on that structure. I want to know it's on the right property. And two, if it's in the floodplain, I want to know it's built to an elevation and to a standard that it's not going to ruin the neighbors and it's not going to, you know, cause damage to anybody else within that flooded area. So there are methods to provide openings in, like, garage structures, ground-level garage structures that break away and allow the hydrostatic pressure within the area of the flood to equalize, so you don't have buildings crashing into buildings and that sort of thing happening. So it's really, the ordinance is more of a development ordinance than a non-development ordinance. I mean, it's, it's pretty friendly when it comes to, you know, being able to do things in there. And so what we, what you have is a few properties, you know, along the wind ridge, the zone is cleared down in a tidally influenced area, and along VIP, same thing. It's down over the edge that people don't generally put anything in because of the tidal action. And if you did end up putting something there, it's, it, you know, in the floodplain, it is usually built to withstand the once-a-month high tides that you get that are extreme. So in general, when you put something down there, it's something that's constructed in a method that's not, is anchored properly and not going to, you know, break away, and it, it allows water to flow through it and stay in place. That's, that's what you have with most of the property in the city that's flood-related, is it's already subject to those types of, you know, inundation on a periodic basis. Let's see, I, I, I guess that's, that, those are the, those are the things that I had to say. As far as administration of it, what would, you know, that fiscal note to the planning department, I don't see there being a lot of additional work necessary, that a lot of those properties are already developed. Those areas that can be developed down in the floodplain are not desirable places to build, but we do have a building permit process, and that, those particular projects will go through the building inspector, and they'll notify the planning department of any, anything that would, or could, could or would happen in those areas. So we have a mechanism to police it and be able to report to FEMA that we're, you know, actively taking care of those areas. So I will probably just get the, plagiarize the form from the borough, because they've been administering this program for quite a while, and have a form on, on hand that people can fill out. What I would, what you're tasked with doing is determining on a certain property what the, what that base flood elevation is from the mapping that's provided from FEMA. So I would get the map, I'd look at the property, I would interpolate the elevation that would be subject to on that property based on the mapping and say, okay, your base flood elevation is going to be, you know, 19.7 feet. You know, you have to build everything above that. It does require a surveyor to go out and establish that. If and when they would build, but it doesn't look like there's a lot of places to build in this, in the city. But that's what we would do. We'd say, you need that. Then at the end, the survey would come in and verify that particular elevation was met on the, on the finished floor of the structure. And then there's a certification that is filled out, that is, that we would keep on file, that we would get to FEMA and show them that it's, it's, it was built to a standard that's able to be, to be, to withstand the flooding that it would be subject to. So I don't see a lot of that happening, but that's, that's what the planning department's job would be. And I just, like I said, I don't see a lot of that happening. So I'm just going to leave it there. And Mitch, you can certainly chime in if, if the mayor will let you and add or delete from that. So that's all I have, and I will stand for questions.
Yeah, Mr. Payne, if you wanted to just jump in and add anything to the overview that was given, that would be appropriate right now?
I don't have anything to add. The only thing I'll say is, from FEMA's perspective, you know, when the community joins the NFIP and even beforehand, we do provide technical assistance. So if Max goes off and fully retires and a new planner is hired, happy to help them out with understanding what those rules and requirements are, and anybody else who needs it within the city. So you aren't alone in this, in managing the development of the floodplain, but we're happy to help when needed. And I'll happily answer any questions that any of the council members have.
Thank you. You did answer one of the questions I had regarding, you know, how that works. The mechanics of someone wants to develop, they would come to our planning, or get a building, pull a building permit, and then there would be the requirements given to them, you know, what would be required for the structure and so on. But is there a requirement for, for properties that are already developed, is there a retroactive? Would this trigger a retroactive action? Would this trigger a retroactive, uh, action to, for compliance?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Uh, I believe that yet there, there, there is, and we had six properties that we've investigated and, and I believe were okay. According to Mr. Bloom, he told me that, that we were, uh, okay with those six properties, that there wouldn't be any further requirements from those properties to, to do anything additional.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, questions from the council? Councilmember next then.
No, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Um, I guess I do, I do have a question and it really doesn't have to do so much with process. It has more to do with the actual code that we have here. And, uh, um, the, really the general question is if you could provide some insight into the, how, how the code was formulated. I believe that a lot of this is, is from FEMA and this is the language we'll use and what leeway we had, we meaning you and, you and Scott Bloom, I believe, you know, in, initially putting this together. But if you could just talk about how the code came together.
Thank you. Through the mayor, Mr. Nechtad, the, um, yeah, that is a good question. Uh, a lot of what you have here are the minimum standards that FEMA is going to, that accepts. So you'll see there are a lot of zones that we don't have, but to be in the program, you, you, you establish the minimum standards and you can get more, more restrictive and more, you know, stringent as you go if you want to. But as far as the boilerplate, what you have in front of you here, this is, this is, are the minimum requirements that FEMA requires to be in the program. So that's where we started was with that. Uh, and, uh, we, we also mirrored off what the borough had on, on their, on their looks also.
Vice Mayor Glenn Danning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Excuse me. Uh, we're currently working on a land development scheme. We've paid a contractor to go and evaluate properties as to their potential. How does this overlay impact the decision and the work that they've done so far? Is it impactful to define what they're doing or, or can they stop and we'll just go with this?
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Glenn Danning. Uh, I'm, I'm not fully aware of that, but from what I've, I mean, I, I've reviewed the properties that are impacted by it and most of them are conservation properties that the city owns. And, um, you know, I mean, I had a project come across my desk, uh, just this morning, um, along the bridge access, they're improving the, um, there's a little, uh, pull-off there and people, interpretive site, uh, along the west side, southwest side there. And the state DOT is going to improve that and put in light penetrating walkway and stairs to the river to help protect the bank. And, and I took and evaluated that project against the code, you know, what would be required and, and sent the DOT and said, hey, we, we have a floodplain, we may have a floodplain ordinance that may require some review. So before you issue your 100% drawings, you know, please allow us the time to review it and comment. A lot of that, they already build in, uh, the, the elevations and the engineers know about the floodplain and they build things adequately to sustain any flooding or, or inundation that might happen because of the flooding. So I'm pretty, you know, DOT is pretty, pretty smart with, uh, that particular thing. But the rest of it, um, you know, I, I, I'm going to defer to, uh, Mr. Ostrander, uh, as far as the, um, impacts to, to the, uh, study that you were talking about.
Uh, Mr., were you, just for clarification, were we referring to the land inventory, um, work that was just completed?
Well, we're still, I, we haven't had a final report on that.
Well, yeah, I, that was in process that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that what, I guess that's what, yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm digging at, yeah. This, this is, is this applied to it? Does it, does it enhance it? Does it change anything in the, in the scope and, and function that we've assigned to our contractor?
Mr. Ostrander?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Danning, so, um, with the waterfront revitalization study is, is what you're referencing and it won't impact the contractor's work at all. Um, that area is all in the tidally influenced area of the city and the impacts to that area through the NFIP are, are very, very minimal. And as far as a contractor itself, it, it's not something that they're going to have to consider as a part of the study.
Uh, Vice Mayor Glenn Danning?
Yeah, so basically what you're saying is that there's a arbitrary area from the bridge, south, the bridge towards the mouth of the river, to the mouth of the river, that is the, the flood zone that you just, just described and it's, is it what, the AE area? It's, it's something that, that's, that's fairly stable and, and known for its, um, its water rise and flow. And, uh, the properties that are there are, uh, well, they've been there, some of them for 100 years, they're still there.
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Danning, yeah, I was referencing the tidally influenced area and, and Mr. Bass might be able to expand on that. There is a, a, a point as you go up the river where that, it, it, that tidally influenced area ends and then actually the regulations become, they, they change in some way, but Mr. Bass might be able to elaborate on that.
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the manager, Mr. Glenn Danning, yeah. That, that, we did look at that area. I mean, we, we went into that, what, that, and I'm sorry I didn't catch the, it's the revitalization study that we're doing along that, that old waterfront there. And I, I took a good look at that and most of that floodplain is down in, you know, in the mud area below. It doesn't, it, it's, you know, it's not going to affect any development within that area. And we, you know, that's another thing I could have done. I had, I had the mapping up to show you the, the little impact that it has to that area. And what Mr. Ostrander was referring to is at a certain point, the floodway stops and it just becomes all AE, um, area. And it, that really is land that gets flooded every once a month anywhere, tries to get flooded once a month or once a year with the extreme high tides. So, yeah, we did look at that and there, it is, is very minimal impact.
Okay, yeah, because there's, you know, my, my point is there's been canneries and whatnot. Um, right next to our city dock, there's a Port of Kenai that has had a building that has been there for many, many years and it seems to be stable as far as, uh, being flooded and whatnot. So, so if we have the, the AE designation and south of the bridge is a, is a known designation for applying this regulation, I, I, I'm convinced that we're in good shape with, with this as far as understanding where, where we are in developing this waterfront. Then, is that right?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Danning, yes, that, that is the case. Um, like you say, you know, those, those canneries have been there since the 1800s. Um, they're not in a, a flood zone in that area, um, and in that highly influenced area that begins somewhere, some amount of mileage above the bridge. I'm not sure where it's at, but that area below it, it, the floodway does change, um, to that AE zone. And, and yeah, development in that area is not going to be impacted or if, if it is, it's, it's very, very minimal impact in that area.
Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Councilmember Basin?
Thank you, Mayor. So Max, if I can, I want to try to see if, if I can understand this for a private property owner. So if, if I owned a piece of property, I, I know we don't have a lot of property that's affected by this. If I had a piece of property today and I was going to build, I was going to build in the floodplain, is the difference, once we pass this, that this is going to help that individual get insurance compared if we don't do it, they won't be able to get insurance? They won't be allowed to, to be insured in the, in the floodplain? And then the other issue is, is that if I developed a piece of property, the goal is for me not to develop that property to where I'm going to divert floodplain water and stuff under other developed properties and have a negative effect on them. Is that correct?
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Basin, yeah, that, you, you are correct, uh, in, in that assumption that what, what will happen is they'll come in and they'll, they'll be, they'll be, uh, what they, it wouldn't prohibit them, if we didn't have this ordinance, it wouldn't prohibit them from following those standards and building above the floodplain. What this does is assurance that it was done and that there's a regulating agency that can sign off and FEMA knows that that was, that happened and that elevation cert is, is obtained and yes, they can get a, a, I, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Payne can answer this. I don't, I suppose if you went out yourself and got an elevation cert and built to that standard, y- you would, you would, you would get that insurance. Uh, but it's, it's based on every, every foot you build above the floodplain, you get a little bit more of a break, uh, for your flood insurance. So if you're two feet over, you're going to get a bigger break and if you're one foot, you know, ideally they want you one foot over. But, uh, us participating, whether you can do that or not, um, I, I, I don't know that, uh, Mr. Basin, whether or not you could, you could get, you could still get a cert. And I don't know if it's the participating, uh, municipality has to administer that or not. Maybe Mr. Payne can, can add to that. But yes, you, you would build and to try to protect flooding from happening and joining.
Thanks.
Mr. Payne?
I can address the, the flood insurance question if you all want.
Sure.
Um, yeah, so, so right now, um, as the city of Kenai does not currently yet participate in the national flood insurance program, um, a property owner is ineligible to receive a national flood insurance program, flood insurance policy. Um, in the past, it used to be pretty much the only flood insurance you could get. Today, there are private insurers that have products on the market. I honestly don't know what it looks like. I'm not the flood insurance specialist. I don't know what the private sector flood market looks like in Alaska, um, but I know there are policies out there. So, um, assuming the city does elect to join the national flood insurance program and is approved to join, then it will add an additional flood insurance product that, um, any resident within the city of Kenai, whether they're in a mapped floodplain or not, they might be in an area that drains really poorly every winter or every breakup season and they get basement flooding and, um, you know, may have issues with that. Anybody can purchase a flood insurance policy within the city of Kenai limits, um, if the city chooses to join.
Further questions?
And I, I will say too, that if, if any individual property owner, um, or a policy holder, if people buy policies, has any issues or questions, um, we do have a flood insurance specialist at FEMA Region 10 that, uh, they can be referred to. And we've got a lot of, uh, help through FEMA for folks with their flood insurance. Um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's one of the differences between the private market and this publicly provided flood insurance program. Um, there are avenues to help folks out and, um, hopefully, you know, nobody ever has to file a flood insurance claim, but if they do and have issues with the adjuster or the private companies that actually sell the policies from FEMA, um, that's how it actually works. People will get it from State Farm, Allstate, whatever their insurance provider is. If they have any issues with the claims, um, then there's some recourse and some opportunities for some assistance within FEMA. So, uh, folks do have that resource, um, if they buy an NFIP policy.
Councilmember Basin?
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody know, are we the only municipality in, in, on the Kenai that doesn't participate at this point or are, are there other ones?
Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Basin, I, I don't know the answer to that, that question. I know Seward and Soldana do, um, Saldovia does, um, I'm not sure about Homer.
I can answer that if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Yep, so the borough participates, um, Seward and Homer do, Soldana currently does not and Saldovia, I believe, is part of the borough, uh, participation in terms of land use authority. Um, so those are the communities that I know of, um, in the borough.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Vice Mayor Glenn Danning?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. To apply for this, this insurance, is there a, is there a fee or a cost? And then to have the land evaluated for the appropriate, uh, policy designation, is there a fee or a cost? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, um, Mr. Glenn Danning. Uh, at this time, the, there, there is no city fee at this time for, for that evaluation. There would be a cost to the private property owner to get the elevation certificate, uh, providing that, that, you know, that shows that everything was built above the floodplain and that does, that, whatever cost that is for, for them. I will say, today's surveys are much cheaper with the advent of the GPS and the North Amer- North American vertical datum that you can plug right in and walk out there. Uh, in the old days, it took sometimes days for us to get an elevation down to the river. Uh, the elevations that FEMA used weighed, some of the old mapping were unrecoverable and so to get, uh, mean sea level datum down there took, and it was costly. But nowadays with, with, uh, with the GPS, I, I, it's not, it's not something that's really onerous.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Do you mind if I add a?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Yeah, thank you. So, so there, there's kind of two sides to a, a property owner's perspective and, um, experience as part of being in a community that participates in the NFIP. One is the regulatory side, um, which you've definitely heard a lot about from, from Max and Paul, um, to, to describe what the city's process is to regulate development that happens in the floodplain. On the flood insurance side, anyone can go independent from the city if the city joins the NFIP and get an NFIP policy. Um, to, um, things have changed a little bit in the flood insurance, uh, purchasing process. Um, in, in April, they made some, FEMA made big, big changes to the program. And so an elevation certificate is actually not required anymore to access an NFIP policy. Um, they will essentially get rated via a, a rating engine that, um, agents who sell NFIP policies through State Farm, Allstate, you know, Progressive, whatever insurance provider a, a person uses. And they actually have a tool to rate those policies independent of the elevation certificate. Um, a property owner, if they disagree or are, you know, aggrieved by the rate that they get quoted, they do have the opportunity to quote-unquote, appeal that rate, um, via an elevation certificate, very similar to, um, what was required in the past. So it is a little bit easier for, uh, property owners and renters and business owners to access these flood policies these days, um, although the rates have changed and, you know, some people are a little bit better off with the new rating system, um, than, than others. So it really just depends on the situation.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Um, I just have one last, well, maybe at least for me, the, uh, when, when this is, does this take into account any sort of ice jamming or flooding as a result of ice jamming in the wintertime? And I was, there's, there's been issues in the past up by, you know, Big Eddie and, and areas like that, um, that, just out of curiosity. Mr. Bass?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. And I don't know the answer to that question. Um, Mr. Payne may have, uh, an answer to the, that, how they evaluate the, uh, ice flows and flooding because you're right, a lot of that, sometimes those snow dams break and fill up and jam ice. So I, I don't know how they deal with that.
Mr. Payne?
And I am not one of the engineering team who developed the flood map, but let me check into that tomorrow and I'll get an answer back, um, to Paul and Max for the rest of you.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that. I was just involved, I've worked for DOT, we had several cases where it flooded, um, where ice jams had had rolled down through the Kenai River and they're, they're pretty devastating because they have the water and the solids of the ice that are sort of scouring the bank as it goes along, so. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Payne? Mr. Bass? And with that, we'll bring it back to council for discussion, deliberation on, uh, ordinance number 3305-2020, oh, sorry, 33298-2022 substitute. Comments, deliberation? Councilmember Penny?
I'm in support of this. Uh, it'll be beneficial for our community members, also for our bluff erosion project going forward. We can't have the, um, opportunity with the Corps if this isn't in place. And so, um, I'm looking forward to voting affirmatively on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I, I will open it for public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to comment on substitute, substitute ordinance 3298-2022? Anybody online? Seeing none, so we'll continue with deliberation, comments from council? Vice Mayor Glenn Danning?
Yeah, the, uh, basically the key driver to this is our bluff erosion project. Is that correct?
Uh, well, I, I would refer to Mr. Ostrander, but I believe that is correct. Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glenn Danning, that is why this came forward is because our, our, uh, agreement with the Corps that we need to sign at the end of the year does require that we're in conformance with, um, the NFIP, are we, are participants in the NFIP program. So that is what brought this forward and, and yes, it's why you see it in front of you tonight.
Uh, Vice Mayor Glenn Danning?
Yes, I will be supporting this. Uh, I'm heartened by the idea and actually the fact that we have upgraded technology to establish the, the profiles, horizons, vertical datum. And, uh, and I think it'll give us a very accurate and consistent representation of, of not only what we're doing as a city, but of, of not only what we're doing as a city, but each property will have a definition also. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yes.
Councilmember Bazedan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3298-2022 substitute is inactive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Appreciate you taking the time to be with us this evening. With that, we'll move-
Thank you. Have a good evening.
With that, we'll move to item D1. Ordinance number 3300-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the General Fund FY 2022 budget, police department, and accepting grants from the United States Department of Justice and Alaska Municipal League Joint Insurance Association for the purchase of ballistic vets, vests. Pleasure, council. Councilor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3300-2022.
I second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3300-2022? Anybody online? Thank you. Seeing none, bring it back to council, comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yes.
Councilmember Bazedan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3322, 2022 is inactive.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Ross, for your work on this. Appreciate it. Next up is item D2, ordinance number 3301-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the General Fund FY 22 budget, police department, and accepting a grant from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for drug investigation overtime expenditures. Pleasure, council. Councilor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3301-2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3300-2022? Seeing or hearing none, bring it back to council, comments, deliberation from council? Councilor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. It's just good to get our overtime in these type of matters covered from the outside.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yes.
Councilmember Bazedan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3301-2022 is inactive.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have item D3, ordinance number 3302-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the Water and Sewer Special Revenue and Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvements Capital Project Fund, and authorizing a construction agreement and purchase order for the sludge press replacement project. Pleasure, council. Councilor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3302-2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. Did you get the second? Okay, very good. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3302-2022? Seeing nobody in chamber online, we'll bring it back to council, 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 uh, Councilor Bazedan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, if administration let the public know, what is a sludge press and why do we need it?
It sounds like we need it. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Bazedan, so I'll, I'll give you the layman's definition and see if that's sufficient. If not, I'm sure Scott can elaborate. But a sludge press is what presses out the liquids from the solids and gets, dewaters those solids, so then we can then ship them off to the landfill. So, it's the last step in the process of the wastewater treatment plant. So, you have those solids, and you want to dewater them so that you take less weight to the, to the landfill than, than you would otherwise.
Thank you.
Further comments? Councilor Naxted?
Thank you. Just a question, reminder, I suppose. I, I saw that the, the construction cost is about $100,000 more than was estimated. We've already budgeted for that or more, because it doesn't seem to be, be in this ordinance. It's covered, I presume.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxted, yeah, so, so we, the engineer's estimate was about $100,000, $120,000 less than what the bid was, but we had more than the engineer's estimate budgeted for the project initially.
Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Was part of it additional items in need of correction or identified in support of the project? In other words, if you would, if you would add a, a certain, a certain item, a certain, say, conveyor that would make the, the new, the new device more efficient? Is, is this part of the consideration for this ordinance?
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glendinning. So, the new equipment, or the new items that were identified during the design process did increase the overall cost of, of this, if that, if that's your question. I'm not sure if we've quantified exactly how much additional that did cost, but those, those additional items that were identified and are necessary for this project did increase the overall cost of the project.
Vice Mayor Glendinning?
So, rough order of magnitude, these considerations that we're talking about will be covered in, in this amount that we're going to approve tonight.
Mr. Ross?
Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Glendinning, yes, the, the engineer's estimate and the bid that we have includes all those additional items that were added during the design process.
I guess a follow-up, Mr., I was just looking, looking at my notes here. Is that, but does that include also the, the ordinance we follow, ordinance 3303-2022? I think there was another one we had on our agenda. Was this kind of part of this total scope? Or was that?
Mayor Gabriel, the-
Oh, that was, I'm sorry, that's for the chemicals.
Yep, next ordinance is-
I thought that was the fan, was there some fans? There was air movement.
Yeah, that was one of the items that was added during the design process.
That's what I wanted, just clarifying. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, Councilor Penny?
So, is part of the air movement part of this whole sludge press process that we've appropriated funds for? Is that correct? Or is that something separate and apart?
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty. I'll defer to Mr. Curtin, but I believe that the air handling that was identified in the design is, is a part of this contract.
Mr. Curtin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the city manager. So, yes, this is where this gets tricky, because there's, there's different air equipment at the facility. So, when this project started, one of the components we did was an assessment of the area that we're doing the work. And the additional items that are being covered within this ordinance that we're asking for additional fund were code-related issues that we are trying to address as part of, of this work. So, that space, because of where it's located and all the equipment that's in it, is in a very wet environment. And with the sewer gases, you have, we have to have an increased air exchange rate in there to avoid having to spend a bunch of money on Class 1 Division 1 electrical requirements. So, that has, that has to do with making everything in the space electrical explosion-proof. So, we're putting in the fans to avoid having to make every single electrical component in that space Class 1 Division 1. So, it was something that was identified during the engineering process. This was found to be the least expensive way of, of still getting us what we needed. And there were other items in there. Jim had touched on the conveyor as being a part of that. So, there's miscellaneous items like that that we're doing, that are appropriate to do at this time. We didn't pick everything. We weren't sure how many we were going to have to do. That's why the budget numbers were a little different. We knew we were going to encounter some of these. We just weren't sure how, what the magnitude was going to be. But everything that we're doing is very appropriate for, for this space. And there will be other air handling equipment for heating and air-type scenarios that you'll see at a later date, but this is specifically to get this piece of equipment up to code where we're allowed to use it. Thank you.
Councilor Penny?
And didn't I understand you to say that we've already seen a huge cost savings on our energy over there that we've been putting out, but we're reducing that energy cost already greatly?
Mr. Curtin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Petty, yes, actually, we've been very successful down there over the last four years. You know, by and large, we're replacing equipment that's 40 and 50, you know, years old. So, when that was built, it was, you know, energy efficiency was not a top priority back in those days. So, almost anything that we install today is going to be substantially better. But yes, some of those early improvements that we've made are giving us returns on investment, which is allowing us to continue with this other work. And, and we've been picking those, you know, highest priority items, kind of moving down this list. So, we started with the aeration basin blowers. We've done wasting pumps. We've done other, you know, pieces of equipment in the facility. In fact, there's a, a purchase order memo in the packet for some other exhaust fans, which are at the clarifiers. That alleviates some condensation issues and things like that that we've had. So, yes, we've been doing, you know, to that end, you know, to, it's, it's improving the facility, but it's also saving money. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Yes.
Councilmember Bazedan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3302-2022 is inactive.
Thank you. Next up, we have item D4, ordinance number 3303-2022, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the Water Sewer Special Revenue Fund for operational chemical costs in excess of budget amounts. Pleasure, council. Councilor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3303-2022.
I second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3303-2022? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilor Naxted?
Faulty memory. I just, seems like it was just a few months ago that we, we bought chemicals for the water system. Is this in a part of that, or were the other chemicals, or am I mistaken?
Mr. Curtin, through the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the city manager. Yes, so these are operational chemicals. We do an annual contract every year, so I believe the last, similar to last year, we had an issue with getting chemicals on time with the shortage. So, we did some legislation to acquire those chemicals through a, a second firm to get them here quicker because of some supply chain issues. We ran into similar scenario this year. We're using a new vendor this year, never used them before, but they were low bid. They missed a barge earlier on, which delayed some chemicals. We've had that to contend with. And we've gotten through that, and it's all fine. But this, this is basically refreshing our budget for expenses that were above and beyond what we were expecting. So, the budget that I presented in the spring to you were based on historical data that we generally expect. Those numbers and the environment that we're in today came in astronomically higher than what we, increases that we've never seen before. And to the point, to be honest with you, I'm looking at alternatives of possibly installing other equipment as a future capital project to possibly generate our own chemicals instead of having to supply them. There's different things that we can do to, to walk away from this eventually, and I'm looking into those avenues as we speak. But for the meantime, this is the world that we're in today, and I don't see a change in here in the near future. So, it's, it's insane. The, the company that we did business last year, I want to say last year's bid was $83,000. Their bid to me, which they lost, their bid to me this year was like $157,000. So, they almost doubled their bid for the exact same thing that I purchased 12 months ago. So, that's, I mean, that's where we're at. So, crazy numbers. Thank you.
Councilor Sonar?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Mr. Curtin, when we were discussing these, the purchase of these chemicals, I'm thinking four or five months ago, you mentioned that you were trying to create like a three-month buffer or a six-month buffer, and I don't remember. I'm just curious, how much chemicals do we have on hand approximately right now as a buffer to alleviate supply chain problems?
Mr. Curtin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we generally try to keep about 60, 90 days on hand at all times. That is, it does fluctuate on demand, and, you know, our fiscal year ends June 30th, and we, you know, we consume our budget as we get to the end of the year. And as a standing rule, I generally make all my guys make sure that we have plenty of chemicals to get through July, understanding that it may take several weeks to get a new contract in place, get a purchase order, and all those things in place before I can, can actually, you know, get materials here. And we had that this year as well, but, you know, we missed that barge, and those chemicals, you know, were not showing up until, you know, I think it was like, they were like nine days, you know, later than that. So, I had, I had to seek alternative, you know, avenues to, to avoid that. During the year, once we get those deliveries, we generally have three months, you know, on hand. It's just when we get down to that, that end that we start running tight towards the end of that year. So, it's been a challenge. We watch it very closely, though. I can tell you, the last, you know, three to four months, we are, we're, we're trying to balance this. Right, I'm being very focused on, on how much money are we spending with, you know, understanding that I can't go to Home Depot and buy these chemicals, you know, that it takes time to get them here. So, that last, you know, quarter of the year, we're, we're really focused on, you know, what we've got on hand, so.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I guess a more focused question from my side would be, would the appropriations of these funds tonight then help us keep that cushion of three months? Or will it get us out of a jam?
Mr. Curtin?
So, this appropriation tonight is intended to take me all the way through, like, honestly, through next July. So, the next 12 months. This is going to supplement my budget that I pass, which included an, an extra month into the following year. And we watch that as, as we go. So, if next, you know, March, April, it looks like we consumed more chemicals than we anticipated, I would likely approach you with legislation at that time saying, I think we're going to be a little tighter than I'm comfortable with, and we would, we would seek to supplement that at that time. Understanding that this fluctuates with every gallon that goes, that we generate, every gallon of water we generate, but also every gallon of water that, that we put out into the inlet through the wastewater plant. So, it's, we have good data on it, but it does fluctuate, you know, how much it rains impacts that, how many people come into the community during the, you know, fluctuates that. So, it's not, I can't give you a pinpoint number, but we're, we're very good guessers.
Thank you. That totally answers my question.
Councilor Sonar? Sorry, Councilor Petty?
Yes, I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Curtin or the city manager, Mr. Ross. Because we're seeing these costs for our water and our wastewater treatment plant go up double, is there a possibility that we're going to have to increase our fees for our community members?
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty. So, the, the fee structure's been set through the budget this year, so I, I would not anticipate, barring some extraordinarily unforeseen circumstances, any changes during the fiscal year. We are contracting with our, with HDR for a rate study of the utility here very, very soon, and that is going to look at the fee structure and, and give us recommendations on whether or not there should be adjustments with that. I don't know if the increase that we've seen in, in chemicals or other operating supplies will be a factor in that rate study or not, but they're going to look at our overall rates and, and come to us for a recommendation that you'll likely see incorporated in the next year's, next year's budget, so FY '24 budget.
Further discussion? Vice Mayor Glendinning?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I see that in the memo, this says staff is investigating opportunities to become less dependent on chemical purchase. It talks about some capital projects, some innovative technology that perhaps would help us, help us with our cost containment. My question is, is this, would this be an appropriate application to ARPA funds? Ask for ARPA funds to plan for something that far in the future? Is that something that is available to us, or, or has that window closed, or can you comment?
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Glendinning. The, the ARPA funds that the city has received have been used for revenue replacement, so they sit in the General Fund.
Since this is the utility, it's likely that you wouldn't want to use the ARPA funds for the utility. I think arguably you could, but, you know, the fact that we use them for revenue replacement for the general fund, and that's where it resides. If council were to choose to use those funds for something outside the general fund, I think you'd have to specifically appropriate those funds outside of the general fund to the utility to apply them to that. In regards to looking for, you know, other chemicals or capital projects that could reduce our chemical costs, I don't think that there's going to be a significant amount of funds necessary to at least look into that. If Scott identifies a capital project that they would want to pursue to manufacture chemicals or whatever that might be, that would be an opportunity for council to appropriate funds to that project.
Glenn Denny.
And so the thirty-thousand-foot theme is that it could be a grant opportunity.
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Glenn Denny. I anticipate that there will be grant opportunities for wastewater and water utilities forthcoming. There have not been any notice of funding opportunities that have come out since Mr. Persley's been looking at our grant opportunities that the city has. One of the things that Mr. Curtin and I have discussed, and that we're likely going to want to get council's blessing on at some point, is to determine whether or not it makes sense to take advantage of the state's revolving loan program for our wastewater and water utility. The capital improvement plan, as we currently have it drafted and approved by council, you know, the revenues that we generate as a utility are not going to be sufficient to cover that. Mr. Curtin is pursuing a grant for a large wastewater treatment plant project through the congressionally designated funds, which is another term for earmarks. That was through Murkowski's office, and it looks very favorable that we're going to get that. And that was a request of two-point-nine million, which would help offset those costs that we have identified. But, you know, longer term, and it's something that we'll have to continue to look at, longer term utilization of state revolving loan fund is likely something that, to maintain the facility and bring the facility, I know, to where Mr. Curtin and I would like to see it, we're probably going to have to tap into that resource at some point, not this fiscal year, but in future fiscal years.
Okay. Thank you for your being forthcoming and looking into the future with us. Now we're prepared.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, please. Clerk, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Basden.
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar.
Yes.
Councilmember Petty.
Yes.
Student Representative Thibodeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Winger.
Yes.
Councilmember Naxton.
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glenn Denny.
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number three-three-zero-three-twenty-twenty-two is enacted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have item D five, resolution number twenty-twenty-two-dash-sixty-one. Authorizing the city manager to extend the restaurant concession agreement in the Kenai Municipal Airport for another, for an additional year. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two-dash-sixty-one, request unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to resolution number two thousand twenty-two-dash-sixty-one? Anybody online? Nobody here and online? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none. Resolution number two thousand twenty-two-dash-sixty-one is adopted. Next up, we have item G four, action approval, purchase orders over fifteen-thousand dollars. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move that we pay the bills for items over fifteen-thousand dollars. Request unanimous consent.
I second that.
And just as a note here, this is generally on our consent agenda, but there is a item in there from HDL Engineering Consultants for the sludge press replacement. And there's a note there that was contingent upon passage of ordinance number three-three-zero-two-dash-twenty-twenty-two. So considering this was the second part to that puzzle to accomplish that. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none. Purchase orders over fifteen-thousand dollars are approved. That brings us to commission committee reports. First up, council on aging.
No reports. Meeting is next month.
Thank you. Airport Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Harbor Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The Harbor Commission met on August the eighth, and they discussed a number of things. They discussed the bluff stabilization opportunity. They discussed the clean harbor participation, and they also discussed the capital improvement plan, potential project amendments. And so the Public Works Director gave a report on the fishery, personal use fishery. The dock closure is targeted to close on November the first, and also dredging the harbor and how that was hauled over to the racetrack. And so that ends my report, and our next meeting will be on September the twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Parks and Rec did not meet this month. We will be meeting on Thursday, September first.
H five, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Excuse me. Planning and Zoning Commission met August tenth here at seven P.M. We had a couple items on the agenda. There was a public hearing regarding resolution PZ twenty-twenty-two-dash-twenty-one was an application for a conditional use permit for an elementary through high school in a suburban residential zone on track day, Kenai Fellowship Church, located at eight-three-thirty-three Kenai Spur Highway in Kenai, Alaska. The application was submitted by Kenai Fellowship Church of Christ address in Kenai. There was a, one testifier, a Mr. Baldwin, fleshed out some of the concerns that the P&amp;Z Commission may have had, and this resolution was passed unanimously by a vote of six to zero. New business, we had an action approval item recommending the Kenai City Council enact ordinance thirty-two-ninety-eight-dash-twenty-two regards the land use floodplain and authorizing the city to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. That was passed unanimously again, six to zero, and we had a thorough discussion on it this evening. That ends my report. The next meeting date, what I have on my note here is an incorrect date. Could someone tell me the next date for planning and zoning, please? Eight-twenty-four-twenty-two. Thank you.
August twenty-four. Unification Committee.
Nothing to report. Meeting next month.
Thank you. Under Mini-Grants Steering Committee, we do have an application that we will be considering next Friday, the twenty-sixth. I'll have a report at our first meeting in September. On a report of the mayor, we'd like to report that we've been busy with our task force meeting, Alaska Bycatch Review Task Force. It's met several times, been pretty busy with all things, all the other things going on this summer, but we hope to start filtering our recommendations to, which are to the full task force by September twenty-fourth. And then there'll be an in-person meeting in Anchorage to have a full task force discussion of the subcommittee recommendations on October fourteenth. So we're getting pretty close. There's a lot of information. On that note, I did attend the Kinnabar Sport Fish, had a roundtable today on several topics. One was bycatch and effects on recreational fisheries. It was a pretty interesting, interesting roundtable, and it was basically some folks, a gentleman from Georgia, giving some of the issues that they face in the Gulf with with bycatch in certain fisheries. And then also a gentleman that had discussed the West Coast, specifically California, things that they're doing to, you know, modify gear and things like that to address bycatch. And then also our Commissioner Douglas Vincent Lang gave a report on our task force work to date. So very interesting and informative. And I just wanted to mention that this Saturday is industry appreciation over at the Park Strip from noon to four. So if anybody's around, hopefully we'll get a break in the weather. A much-needed break would be nice. And with that, that ends my report. And with that, I'll turn it over to administration reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I have a couple of new hires I wanted to report to council. We've hired a new deputy fire chief at the fire department. John Harris has been hired, and he's filling the role that Mark Anderson has had there as deputy chief. Mark will be retiring on August thirty-first after twenty-three years with the city. He's going to be hard to replace. He's got just an incredible amount of institutional knowledge, a great asset to the fire department. But John Harris, matter of fact, has also been there for twenty-three years. And in fact, a very interesting fact is that both John and Mark were both hired on September first, nineteen ninety-nine. Found that out today. I found that pretty crazy. So anyways, excited to have John with us as in that position, and sad to see Mark go, but I know he's got great plans for his retirement. We also have hired Lana Metcalf into the new controller position that council authorized in July. Our, the person in that current position is in the accountant position, that's Sue Best, who's retiring from the city after being with us for seven years. But we're excited to have Lana. We're bringing her over from Soldatna. And before I announce the next hire, I do want to say that I think all of you saw the benefit of having Mr. Best with us over the last six weeks, and he's going to be with us through the end of September. He's been incredible help, and I greatly appreciate his help and Willie Anderson's help to keep that planning department afloat during the time of year when it's probably at its very busiest. So he's been a huge help, and I really want to thank him publicly, him and Willie both. But I have hired a new planning director, and her name is Linda Mitchell, and she will be starting with the city on September twenty-sixth, on or before September twenty-sixth. That's going to give us an opportunity to overlap between her and Max, at least probably four or five days before Max heads off to take his RV down south. And we're hoping to get that admin assistant hired in September as well and have some overlap while Willie is still here. So hopefully have a little bit of overlap come August, or excuse me, October. The new planning director and the admin will be on their own, but that overlap's going to help. And Linda comes with us with a ton of planning experience, and I'm really excited to see what she can do in the planning department here. Larry Persley and Randy Broyles and I have been meeting with the Borough and all the other cities in the Borough to apply for a planning grant. It's about one-point-two-million-dollar planning grant that we'd like to pursue. It's called Safe Streets and Roads for All, and that will collect data and provide recommendations on how we can make the city's streets and highways within our city safer. And what it's also going to do is position us for grant funds that require that you have this sort of data to even apply for them. And one of the items that's been talked about, you know, is how people get through the city. And in particular, we've got these barriers called Bridge Access Road and the Kenai Spur Highway. How can people get from one side of the other safely? Are there ways that we can do that through construction projects? This is the first step to do that. Like I said, it's one-point-two-million dollars. All the cities and the Borough are on board. I'll be bringing a resolution to council at your next meeting, asking for your support to apply for the grant. There is going to be a match requirement associated with it. We're not exactly sure on what that amount is, but it's probably going to be about twenty-thousand dollars for our portions. So I think it's money well spent because it does position us for grant opportunities going forward. McKinley Group is close to finalizing the Kenai waterfront revitalization study. We're going to schedule a joint work session with the council and all of the commissions at the, on September twenty-first, so right before your council meeting from four-forty-five to five-forty-five. We thought since we started this off with all the commissions and the council in joint work session, we'd end it with the joint work session. So they'll be giving their final presentation. They'll present the final study and then have an opportunity for council members and commission members to ask questions and get answers as well. So that, again, that's on the twenty-first, before the council meeting. Today, Scott Curtin and I met with Department of Transportation Commissioner Ryan Anderson. He actually wanted to meet outside, so we stood in the rain for about twenty-five minutes, and it was really raining when we were out there. But he wanted to take a look at the bluff project, so we showed him that. And then we just talked generally about opportunities for the city to work with DOT on projects. We talked about funding opportunities that are coming up with DOT as well. There's a new program that hasn't been launched by DOT, Community Transportation Development, CDT or CTD. It's an opportunity for communities to apply for grants to upgrade their streets. And again, the DOT hasn't done it for six or seven years at least, so that's going to be released this fall. He gave us an update on the Kenai Spur Highway. Construction should be ongoing, started next year as well. So it was good discussion. He was on his way from Homer back to Anchorage, and it was nice that he stopped in and gave us a few minutes of his time. Earlier this week, we had a dip net wrap-up, and I just wanted to mention it because there were a couple things that we identified this year that we're going to change operationally next year to try to alleviate those things. I don't know if council noticed, but during the second-to-last weekend of the year at North Beach, the queue between the fee shacks and the highway was completely full, and the line went extended out onto the highway into the turning lane, almost all the way to Kenai Chamber. And we were able to alleviate that. We brought some TEOs and some police officers and got people through the exit gates that we could. But what we're going to do next year instead is we're going to actually open up the bypass lane there. So anyone who is going to the Lee Shore Center or the Catholic Church or what might be the Boys and Girls Club, they'll go through that bypass, bypass the line completely. Or if you already have a viable permit for the fishery, you can go through the bypass. So it should neck that amount, that line down significantly. And the second thing we're going to do is we're going to install a third shack at the bottom of the hill at the beach, because what happens is people buy a twenty-four-hour permit, and then the next day they have to come up to the shack and renew that permit if they want to stay for another day. This will allow them to renew that at the bottom of the hill without having to come up to the fee shacks on top. So we think with both the bypass road and the third shack, we're going to alleviate all of those congestion concerns that we saw this year. And it's going to be a lot safer for folks, too, because we're not going to have people walking from the beach up that, up South Spruce, up to the fee shacks. You know, it's just a matter of time before someone gets injured walking on that, because there's not much of a shoulder on that road. Last thing, bluff project, no real update, although I did confirm with Mr. Curtin today when we were talking to Commissioner Anderson, that we are still slated for construction bids going out on April third of twenty-twenty-three. So that is still scheduled in early April. And that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you, City Manager Ostrander. Can you give us an update on the cemetery expansion project as well as the slash removal area?
Mr. Ostrander.
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Winger. So the slash disposal site is going well. June was much, much busier than July. We saw a significant decrease in the amount of traffic. There were several days in July on Sundays when we only had, I think, one day we only had three or four visits the entire day. So we may want to look at whether or not that we want to adjust that slightly if we continue to see those types of low numbers. But we, it is going well. We're confident at this point, as long as things continue the way they are, that it won't fill up before October first, so we should be able to keep it open through the month of September, which I know folks will appreciate. I would anticipate that as we approach winter, we're going to see that number increase again as people realize they need to get things down before there's three feet of snow on the ground. So it has been going well. As far as the cemetery expansion, Mr. Curtin could probably expand on, I think it was in his mid-month, but, Mr. Curtin, if you could just give a brief summary on where we're at on that project?
Mr. Curtin.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the city manager. I have been having conversations with fencing manufacturers and contractors, the type of fence we're looking at. Nobody down on the peninsula actually reps any of those products, so they're out of Anchorage. I have not gone out for bids or quotes on any of that at this time. And to be honest with you, it's workload, it's other projects that are taking precedent over that particular one. There was some, you know, steel supply chain type issues that I was hearing rumors on, and with the other stuff, I just kind of, it got pushed off to the wayside. So I have had several conversations within the last thirty days, but just haven't hit the street with it yet. So I don't expect to see any fence going in yet this year. It'll be a spring. I do expect that it'll be in-hand and available in likely May, getting installed out there. And I've had other conversations. HEA was working on providing me an estimate about putting a power pole and a light out there, but I haven't gotten those numbers or design out of them. And I know they're busy, and it's a small project. They're focusing on other things as well. They're focusing on other other things as well. But yeah, I mean, you, it, I was hoping, and speaking with the clerk's office earlier this this year as well, we do have, I want to say 60-some units, I think, that we we actually have plotted and are available for sale. But it's, it'll be next, it'll be next year, really, before it starts to look like the other cemetery. So it's on me. My apologies for that. It's 100% on me.
Ms. Ostrander?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I want to follow up just one thing on that, Councilmember Winger. One of the things that we have discussed, you know, the fencing has been problematic to to acquire. And one of the things that we have discussed internally, and I was considering bringing to the Parks and Rec Commission for their input and then potentially to council, is the idea that maybe a fence around the cemetery expansion is unnecessary. It would be a significant cost savings, and if you look at most of the cemeteries around the country, they don't have fences. I know our original cemetery has a fence. You know, Soldatna Cemetery doesn't have a fence. If you if you drive around and just look at cemeteries, they generally don't have fences. So it was something that we were talking about as a possibility. You know, again, I think it's it's really up to the, you know, the council, if you want us to not go down that path, that the scope of the work of that project was that we were going to put in a fence. I do think personally that it's worth considering not putting in a fence in the second part of that cemetery. I think there's a couple of things that we would have to count for. But, you know, the reality is that that if people want to get on there with the, an ATV or whatever they can, even with the fence around it, the current cemetery, you know, we don't lock the gate. So it's just something I wanted to bring up. It's something we had discussed, and I was I was considering bringing it to the commission for their input and then also to council for for you to consider.
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you for that update on that, and I guess a future consideration that may or may not come forward to our body. Just to weigh in a little, switching gears, to weigh in a little on the DIPnet fishery, I think you guys did identify a good point that there was a lot of congestion out onto the highway. We had done a funeral at the church, and they were very accommodating, but they did have to block off the road and the access for almost a solid 30 minutes while they allowed the flow of traffic to come out of the Catholic Church. And that really significantly backed up the traffic, actually, all the way through the stoplight headed out towards North Kenai as well as towards the chamber. So it did back it up both ways, as well as on the Spur, the road as well. So I think that's a good identification that we made, and hopefully that will help. And one, one thing I would note, too, is maybe when we have all those officers in play right there, when they see people maybe riding in the back bed of pickup trucks or, you know, not having proper trailer lights on some of their ATV trailers and stuff, that if they see that, maybe that's something they can talk to the people about. You know, I know that's routine traffic control, but there were, we did notice quite a few people that were coming and going through those with non-working lights on trailers and stuff. So, thank you.
Further questions, City Manager, Vice Mayor Glendanny?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you for your report on the BU Fishery. Would there, would there be a written review of what you encapsulated today along with the the budgetary shortfall or overage? We'll have a report as we usually get in the fall.
Ms. Ostrander?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Glendanny. Yeah, there'll be a DIPnet report like there is every year. It's going to be, it's going to be generated a little bit differently because, as you know, the the Parks and Rec Department took over the PU Fishery, so they're the owners of the fishery now. So it will be generated a little bit differently, but for the the end user, the end reader, it's probably not going to appear a lot different. It'll be very similar to last year's.
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I apologize. I had one more thing. I believe I've heard some about the Silver Salmon Derby that's kicking up. Do you mind talking about that? I believe that starts next month.
Ms. Ostrander?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, it's in September. It's it's in later in September. It is, don't quote me on this, but I think it's the 13th to the 18th of September. So this will be the Sixth Annual Kenai Silver Salmon Derby. You know, and again, it's it's not a big fish derby. It's unique in that way in the state. It's all based on randomly generated numbers, and we're excited to see it. We've got great interest again this year in folks that want to sponsor, so it looks like it's, it's, we're going to have really healthy sponsorship again, and that ends up resulting in really good prize money, and that attracts people to it. So we're excited for it. And I can actually look it up here and give you the, confirm that those are the dates if you'd like.
Thank you.
Further questions, City Manager? Councilmember Basin?
Thank you, Mayor. Comment, a question, comment with your selection for your deputy chief over at the Fire Department. Great pick, and yeah, losing Mark, actually, he's had a lot of history, and I remember when both those individuals were hired in the department. Like to take credit for it, but I can't. But I remember them being there. And we have an abandoned vehicle on Silver Salmon. If you turn into the pillars, it's been there for a couple of weeks. It's been identified and tagged. I just kind of wanted to reach out. I don't know how long we keep a vehicle in the in the right of way until we take action. So if you would look into that for me. Thanks.
So I see you got the date up, Ms. Ostrander, on the?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. It is September 13th. It's September 18th this year.
Thank you.
And it's $10 per day and $50 if you want to participate every day of the Derby.
Further questions, City Manager? Vice Mayor Glendanny?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Do you have an update on the Dog Park for us, please?
Ms. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I will actually ask Mr. Curtin to provide that because he's the one managing that project right now.
Mr. Curtin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the City Manager. You'll see some legislation coming forth at the next council meeting, September 7th. We're working on getting the remaining fence quotes, the dollar amounts for the fence that came in through our procurement process, trigger requirement that I have to competitively bid because of the magnitude. So it was one of the things that I was struggling with initially on that. We have different pools of money coming from different places, and we had some volunteers that were potentially participating but not participating, and it was, it was getting a little challenging for me to try to procure, you know, who's doing what. So I've kind of, I've I've taken over all of that now to to get the fence done. We've got the path installed, the culvert's been put in for the ADA ramp down to the new pavilion. The pad, the gravel for the pad has all been excavated out and rebuilt up in preparation of pouring concrete for the new pavilion. Drainage rock's been put in. I have, the fence line has all been wood chipped, so there's a walking path around the perimeter of the entire new area that council granted the committee earlier in the year. So I anticipate September 7th, you'll see some legislation on approving a PO to go forth with the fence. My hope is that fence would be going in the following week in preparation of that. Concrete pad will be going in. Jeff Twight was in my office late last week. He's the volunteer that's going to be building the pavilion. And I'm working on quoting the materials for the pavilion, so I'm going to take care of those with the funds that council has already allocated to the project. You won't see a PO on that. It'll be less than the $15,000 amount, so you won't see that in the packet, but it'll be something that's happening here within the next 30 days. Concrete will be the same going forth with that. And, yeah, I've been, I've been working with the whole committee. They're, they're getting some signage ordered. We've got a bunch of benches. We actually have a lot of parts. We're just trying to button it up this year. So we did replace all the topsoil, fixed the field, put down topsoil, and hydroseating's the last step of that as well. So, so really, hydroseating, fence, and concrete pad are really like over the next 30 days. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Glendanny?
Thank you. So from that, I got the impression that you're the project manager in total for that now?
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions, City Manager? Councilmember, next then.
I was wondering if Mr. Ostrander could expand on Ms. Mitchell. You said she had lots of experience. I don't know where she came, comes from and what that experience is. If you could just elaborate a little.
Ms. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember next, yeah. So she, she has a degree in planning, and she has worked for the last 10 years in multitude of places. She's worked primarily in California for most of that time. She also worked in Utah as well. So it's about 10 years of planning experience plus her degree. She was in the military prior to that, so actually the Army National Guard for 10 years. So again, she's, she's been in quite a few places. It was the, the interview, immediately when we got done with the interview, we knew that we wanted to bring her up for a second interview. And and in between the first and second, I called the references, and and I've told multiple people this, so I'll share it with council. I think that in in my career, they were probably the the best references I've ever received from any applicant. They were, to a person, were incredibly positive. So again, I'm really excited to see her on board, and and I think she's going to be, going to be a really great asset to the city.
Further questions, City Manager? Seeing none, we'll go to the City Attorney, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I don't have any thing to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, City Attorney? Seeing none, we'll go to the City Clerk, Ms. Sener.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I have no comments this evening available for questions.
Any questions, City Clerk? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Shelley, I just want to say thank you for all your long hours and hard work through the election.
Further comments, questions? Councilmember, next then.
Well, I am curious how things went here in all the polling. Do you have anything to, anything unusual?
No, my, my chair's, so I think six precincts reported into me last night and just turned in over the materials, but the general consensus was turnout was higher than normal last night.
Any further questions, City Clerk? Seeing none, we will go to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not, well, at any, any item? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none, we will go to Council Comments. Councilmember Petty?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just remind everybody, this Saturday is a soup supper that benefits the Food Bank, and there's tickets available. You can call over at Food Bank and get all the details, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Representatives Thibodeau.
Hello. I want to thank you all for listening to me and Jake about the marching band. I don't have much to report. It's only the second day of school. It's going pretty well so far. Football season is coming in a full swing. We have, I believe, our first home game Saturday. JV is at 11 o'clock, and Varsity is at 1 o'clock. The marching band will be playing, so if you want to come to that, you're all free to come, and other than that, nothing else.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonar?
I'd like to thank our clerk, as the other council members did, for your work yesterday, long hours. I'm still kind of foggy from yesterday. It was a long day, but turnout was higher than usual. So that's a good thing.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just want to thank Willie and Max with our Planning and Zoning Department for coming in and helping us out through that tough summer season. That way we didn't have any interruptions in operations. And I would like to congratulate Mr. John Harris on his promotion. Mr. Harris is just amazing. We get to work with him in all of his community endeavors. Got to know him very closely through the wrestling community, great family, and really excited to see him in this position. And I would like to wish the best to Ms. Sue West, who's got her retirement party on August 25th at 11:30 AM, and then also to Chief Fire, Mark Anderson, who's retirement September 2nd. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Glendanny.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'd like to thank Administration for the expansive, expansive, expansive reports for us, and I'm sure next time you'll tell us about the new scheme for plowing snow in the city. We're coming to that season. We were promised that, but it was June when I thought of it, and it wasn't inappropriate, but it's, it's close. And, yeah, we're, we're in a good place. Your, your people that you have working with you, I'm, I'm really proud to, to be associated with them, and Mr. Best was just superb in, in what he did. And of course, I worked with him over at the Borough, too, and so it, it was, it was educational. And just thank you for bringing him on board for that while.
Thank you. Councilmember Basin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just publicly thank all of our election volunteers and the clerk for a successful election. You make it seem seamlessly. I don't think most of the public understand the amount of time and effort you put into it to make it look that way, so thank you.
Councilmember, next then.
No further comments.
Thank you. Seeing no other pending mon, pending items before this body, we are adjourned.